Okay, this time we'll ask the clerk to call the row and establish a quorum, please.
President.
Here.
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 Commissioner Stoltz is not with us tonight. He did notify me that he had a family emergency and regretted that he was not able to be here, but he does have a concern in his family that he had to tend to, so he's regretted that he's not able to be here tonight. Okay, on our agenda, and we did include this in the packet, so there is an amended agenda that's in the packets, and that was to add an additional resolution to amend our budget. And so, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to this board that they accept the amended agenda dated June 13th, 2024, which is the adding of Resolution R-22-24 to amend the budget. So, a motion, or second to that motion?
Yes, second.
You got a second for Commissioner Askew? Any further discussion with the board of the agenda, any other changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as modified. Okay, we have our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting back on May the 23rd, 2024. Clerk has prepared those minutes. Is there any questions or concerns of the board of these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve those minutes as presented by the clerk?
So, moving.
Motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, now at this time is our public comments, or anyone that'd like to come forward, excuse me, and speak up to five minutes? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record, please.
My name's Jim Pope, and Mr. Gottlieb, I got a quick follow-up question on what I asked you a couple of months ago, and that was, what is your opinion on how our local law, enabling law should be worded so that it would be unquestionably clear that this board does not have the authority to replace our chairperson, his duties with a county manager? But, before I get your answer, I'd like to tell you why I'm so interested in this. I was in the group that started this board, it was the old Tea Party, started the talk of it. In 2010, Paul Shaw told me, hey, this county's running big in debt, and he was going to run for commissioner in 2012, which he did. By that time, he was sounding alarm, we were $40 million in debt, but I don't think many people believed him when he said that. 2016, Shannon came along, and then our debt was up to 75 million, county debt, something like that. And, so, this Tea Party, under the leadership of Dean Kelly, was really talking about, we need a board, and the word was spreading there. But, we were also saying, we can't have both a chairperson doing the administrative duties of the county and a county manager too, because that would be two people getting paid big bucks to do the job of one person. So, we're heavily in debt, we need to be getting out of debt. So, we studied this real a lot. In fact, we went to Dade County to talk with their chair in one of the districts. Didn't you go with us that day, Shannon? Yes. And everything over there seemed to be working smooth, so we were trying to get it put into the law, and I think, far as I'm concerned, the law was clear that this chairperson must be in charge of day-to-day duties of the county, administrative duties. And, so, that's why I'm so interested in it, one reason. And so, if I could, I was just wanting your opinion, but I see we're about to run out of time, so why don't I just ask you that opinion next time? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, sir. Does the crew like to be next? Yes, sir, please. Please state your name, sir.
Hello, Sean Molliver. The last meeting we had, May 23rd, the question I have to address is for Mr. Stoltz, well, he's not here, but I still want to bring it up and talk about it for his closing statements. It's really eye-opening, and I'm not for this vetting process that he suggested to the Republican Party. My opinion on this whole process is, look what's going on in Catoosa County, what they've been going through with their vetting process. They're tied up in court, I mean, it's just a whole mess. In my opinion, that's no way to run any kind of government, in my opinion. I mean, I don't really know y'all's party or anything, I know, or anything like that, but I mean, I personally don't think it's a right process to even think about doing. At the end of the day, I mean, is this, it's just not a good idea, it's a waste of time, it's a waste. When you're running for a campaign in the first place, you're already spending beaucoup money on running your own campaign, and now with this vetting process with Catoosa County's doing, these candidates are tied up in court, they can't get out there and campaign, they're tied up in legal fees on top of running a campaign. I mean, and we're even lucky, they're even got the chance to run there, be in their election, because of all the processes they had to go through, and, you know, it's just, I hope the people down in Atlanta, the Senate or the state, or the Congress, or whoever, anyways, the House and Senate, will really look into this and bring this up and make this for, there's no way that we should have a vetting process. If you're a voter, you vote for who you want to choose for, who you want to run, and these people are sitting here, you know, not even thinking if they're going to be on the ballot, and it's just a waste of time, energy, and, I mean, I just hope that that's as far as it's going to go, and that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Who's next? Yes, sir, come on up. Please state your name.
Yes, my name's Robbie Tate, I live in District 3, which is represented by Mr. Hart, and congratulations on your recent reelection. I live right across the street, my neighbors are in District 4, which are, they're represented by Commissioner Stoltz. I was disappointed that he chose not to seek reelection, but like the previous speaker, I was also disappointed in his remarks at the end of the closing in the last meeting, and I wish you were here. I consider him my friend, I've reached out to him about a couple of issues that come up. I rode for one, thank God it's on the shortlist to be paved this year, it's in terrible condition. But, his remarks were, and I'd like to quote him, he said, "I would like to make a suggestion moving forward, I think it would be in the best interest of the party as well as the best interest of what Republicans stand for. I feel as though I would like the Republican Party to consider doing a vetting process on all candidates who declare for elected office. I think Republicans stand for high values, high morals, and I think the vetting process would do several things. I think it would verify bios, resumes, I think it would verify work history to make sure that it is factual, educational history to make sure it's factual, and I think this would save the party a lot of grief and a lot of headaches moving forward." Well, like the previous spokesperson, it will not alleviate a lot of headaches, it will cause a lot of headaches. This thing in Catoosa County went all the way to the federal courts, and they were overruled, they were struck down. I don't think that we need to be placing restrictions or conducting background checks. That's why we have the whole process where people get out and campaign, the public and the media are vetting those candidates, okay? I don't know if there was some particular candidate who maybe said something that wasn't true about their work history or their educational history, I'd like to know what the background, what prompted that, because I just think that we're moving down a slippery slope when we, when we start trying to restrict people to run for office. I'd like to point out that, if my numbers are correct, in the last, the primary here, only 9,500 voters voted. We have almost 68,000 residents in Walker County, that's 14%. In 2020, the presidential election in Walker County, there were a little over 23,000 voters, that's 34%. So, we're already letting a third of the voters, or in this other case, one-seventh of the voters decide who's in office. We don't need 30 people who attend meetings of the Republican Party deciding, we don't want this guy on the ballot, or we don't want this woman on the ballot, and we want to keep him off. And so, I strongly urge the Republican Party to come out and publicly say whether they're going to try to implement a vetting process. That's all I have.
Thank you, Robbie.
Yes, sir, right here, so you first, and then get you the rest of the room.
The last two gentlemen that spoke, my name's Randy Pittman, and I'm with the Vice Chairman of the Walker County Republican Party. We have no intentions of vetting people. Brian Hart asked me when he walked in the office to qualify this time if we was going to vet him, I said, no, you check good, so.
What?
We never hope. But we have no intentions of doing that, you know, we see what our sister party is going through, unless rocks fall from the sky, we're not going to vet folks.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, someone else wanted to speak? Okay, yes, sir. Please state your name.
Ned Yates. My attitude is this, from Mr. Stoltz of the last meeting, and the last number of speakers, this is not a Republican Party meeting. Any business Republican Party, bump Republican Party, does not belong before Walker County Commission. Wasting y'all's time and everybody's here's time, do that in the party. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'd like to begin with where I left off last meeting, the fact that Walker County has paid utility bills for the city of Rossville for the past 15-plus years. I would like to thank the Commission for beginning to resolve this and get this switched back to the city of Rossville. This will save Walker County approximately 27K annually. I did, however, make a big mistake last meeting, and I apologize for not catching this. I quoted an agreement between Walker County and the city of Rossville back in 2008 that began this practice of paying utility bills on Ellis Roads. My mistake was, there actually never was an agreement, and let me quote, BB Haskell sent a letter on January 15th of 2009 to then-mayor Johnny Baker, and this was a draft copy of the MOU. It reads, part of the letter reads, "If this meets with your approval, please sign and return both copies by mail." This was never signed. Secondly, it reads, second paragraph, "Upon approval of a more detailed recreation plan, Walker County agrees to pay all utilities on recreation property," blah, 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 it continues. A more detailed recreation plan was never created, this was never signed, there never has been an agreement with the city of Rossville. I've done open records requests with the county and with the city, I've gone back and double-checked, I've brought this to administrative people and said, am I mistaken? No, there has never been an agreement. So let me be abundantly clear, Walker County has paid almost $450,000 in utilities over the past 15 years for the city of Rossville, and there's never been an agreement. I don't know if anybody else is shocked by that, but I am. Okay, so this leads me on to other financial things. I made a financial open records request about expenses paid at the gym on Williams Street. At first, I was told, no public officer or county is required to prepare reports, summaries, or compilations that, not in existence at the time of the request, and my request was concerning the request for all expenses paid to vendors at the, at the said property. Well, then I went back and said, well, you just put a new roof on it, and you just put an air conditioning in there, so there has to be capitalized expenses because they go on a depreciation schedule. So finally, after much gnawing of teeth, I get a depreciation schedule, and this is in no less than six email exchanges where literally I am explaining accounting and asking for this every way till Sunday. I get one $16,000 2023 building improvement budget that's referenced to the depreciation schedule, and then I say, may I please have a copy of the depreciation schedule? Yes, I get one. So on this depreciation schedule, there's also reference to $192,000, $192,462 in building improvements. I've asked for backup documentation on that over a week ago, have yet to receive it. But here's the funny thing, there's, on page seven, there's a new roof that's referenced with about $150,000 cost to begin with, but the PO from 9/25/2020 has the new roof at costing $261,000. Now, maybe there's a reasonable accounting reason why we issued a PO for a capital improvement, and yet only $150,000 gets depreciated? I don't know, I've asked clarification on that, yet I do not have it. Which leads me to the other issue at the Williams Street Building, which is Rossville Athletic Association. Because there's never been an agreement with Rossville, there's never been an agreement with the Rossville Athletic Association. They only had one regards to the ball fields. So we've had somebody on our property since 2022 collecting rent, let me be perfectly clear about that, there's a Hispanic basketball league that plays there on Sunday nights, they pay rent to an athletic association that has no authority to represent the county and is not even operating legally. And I request respectfully that we cease and desist all operations with Rossville Athletic Association until, A, they become a legally operating entity, and I can go into that in detail at another date, so I don't have your seconds, and two, I also ask that we seek all rent that has been collected by this organization to be reimbursed to Walker County because it was not collected legally. Thank you.
Jamie Halsey, I'll begin by congratulating Gene Wilson for a race well played by others. I assume y'all are aware of depreciation values and things like that, but anyway. As a graduate of Kennesaw State University, I just want to let you know I'm here to talk about the surprise of drama surrounding the Rossville Athletic Association. I've been told this issue is complicated. No, this is the least complicated issue ever presented by, to an executive board. It's all about operating a business legally. Let's start here, SSA and Mr. Blakemore's group that host tournaments in Rossville, they're not incorporated, this means they cannot have a business bank account, this means that he would have to have some way to account for these funds and report them accurately to the IRS. This could be done on a Schedule C on his personal return, maybe that'd be a good question to ask Mr. Blakemore. Cash, it was estimated he'd make towards $10,000 to $20,000 per weekend when he hosts these tournaments. No rent is paid, no utilities paid, maintenance is performed by prison labor at times, witnessed. Where does all the cash go? Umpires, how do they get paid? Without a business, it can really be complicated to pay someone under your personal social security number, it can be done, maybe this is another good question to ask. Business license, does he have one? Moving to RAA, this is nonprofit and operate legally, it takes even more due diligence. The most basic is accounting for all monies, does RAA have a bank account? All I've seen in reference to is Venmo, that's not a bank account. Nonprofits are required to release certain information to the public that includes Form 990, financial statements, board minutes, although requested, this has not been provided, that's IRS law. They're required to file the correct Form 990. RAA filed a 990N, it is not possible, this is the correct, that this is the correct form. They receive more than $50,000 in in-kind donations, have they been notified of in-kind donations from the county? Director salaries are strictly defined, does RAA even pay a W-2 salary? All of this is just a fraction of the violations for SSA and RAA. So instead of blaming everyone else and talking about the kids, get your business house in order, work hard on any RFPs that may come out, then not only will the kids be able to play, even though it's tournament, you can be proud of the business you might can create. That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Chair, district guys, clerk, Mr. Gottlieb, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Start with, I was at a meeting, 6:30, 24 this year, and it was the budget, 25 budget, preliminary work session, whatever, and I did notice that there was two missing presentations, the Civic Center and the Trans Department. I don't know what happened to those two entities, but they're not on the list to have spoken. And then back, I gave the handouts, I've been asking for this for the last seven, six, seven years. We had an Ironman agreement back in 2019 that they were going to supply us with a $160,000 grant to help us install 40 fire hydrants around our county. Then, in 6:24 of 21, us, the county, was going to throw in 250 more, so we had $310,000, and I've asked for the last long time. I even sent out a nice email, I thought, to every one of you guys, I didn't get but four replies, one didn't seem to even want to answer, so that's $310,000 worth of fire hydrants. So I went to a meeting Tuesday night at the Water Board Authority, and I asked before the meeting even started, could I get that information? Five minutes, I had it right there in my hand, where they're located, how many's on the yard, how many's put in the ground. I just can't imagine it's that hard. Sure, it's not y'all's job to tell me that, but I would have thought somebody could have told me exactly who to go see. Instead, I learned it sitting there in a meeting that hadn't even started yet. So, y'all see where they are, and I'm pleased with that, but I'm still concerned with the Ironman obligation. I've been told, a gentleman's been trying to get some answers, that there's still like 35 grand that's not been paid. However, we just let those guys come through our county, again, which, hey, I'm all for it, I just don't get on the roads when they're here, but I think they should fulfill their obligation before we, you know, continue to let them just come and use our facilities. I mean, don't put us, don't tell us you're going to give us something, and wait, this is eight years, that's pretty strong. Hinkle Fire Station is a sore spot for me, it's been a sore spot for me for about 12 years. You go up there and look at the site, it plainly states on the building, Hinkle Fire Station. Nowhere on the grounds do you see anything about a community center. Ever since I was involved back 10 years ago with the Dollar Store, et cetera, et cetera, it's always been called Hinkle Fire Station, and never was planned to be a community center. I don't think, I think we have a fire combo situation in Villanow, if I'm speaking correctly, but you go over and look at that facility, the size, what it is versus Hinkle, I don't think you can get both in that building. Maybe we can, but there again, I've been told on that particular item, if there's $300,000 splash money, been waiting since 2010, or 2020, excuse me, let's use it. I've been told that there's some new redesign going on. I also was told the drawings laid on somebody's desk, I asked two years ago, and a gentleman says, yeah, I've checked on that, and the drawings are laying on the corner of a desk, they've not been even looked at, some kind of preliminary design, and now I've been told that they're now going back to an architect in Ringo. $86,000 or whatever the cost is going to be for those redesigned drawings, wow, it's a firehouse. Let's go up there and spend the $300,000 we got, or what they say we got, and make it a firehouse. Those people deserve protection as well as anybody else in this county. And, because I've been up there, like I said, I just don't see, everybody's wanting to have cookouts and stuff, but those folks in that part of the mountain, they don't, when they have a cookout, they do it out in their front yard, and they play outside, they don't go to a building and all hunkered together, they just don't do it. That's all I got.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward then on our agenda. Okay, under unfinished business, we hit the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting held on April 11th, 2024 at 6:30, it was tabled at the May 16th, 2024 meeting, and tabled again on the May 23rd, 2024 meeting. We do have a copy of those in here, I know there was some question about some interaction that Commissioner Hart and I had regarding the recreational trail at the Civic Center, that is in item number two on the second page, that exchange of information, so we have a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve.
I was have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, we've had a couple of requests here for some appointments, so the next item on our agenda is Resolution R-020-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Chickamauga Public Library Board and the Rossville Public Library Board, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, the Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the Board is to appoint members to all committees of the Board with the approval of the Board, and whereas OCGA 20-5-42A provides that the county Board of Trustees shall consist of at least one appointee from each governmental agency financially responsible for the library on a regular basis, and whereas OCGA 20-5-42B provides that the Regional Board of Library Trustees shall consist of trustees serving on member county boards who are appointed to the Regional Board by each county board for a term specified in writing pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the library system. And whereas a vacancy will exist on the Chickamauga Library Board due to the expiration of term for Vicky Garner on June 30th, 2024, whereas a vacancy will exist on the Rossville Public Library Board due to the expiration of term for Doris White for June 30th, 2024. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointments to serve, Teresa Guffey to the Chickamauga Public Library Board for a term beginning July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30th, 2027, Susan Tankersley to the Rossville Public Library Board for a term beginning July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30th, 2027. Therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Teresa Guffey and Susan Tankersley are approved, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of June, 2024. This does come from Lisa Eubanks, the Cherokee Regional Library System Director. She has recommended these appointments. I agree with these appointments, so I'd like to make the motion that the board approve this. So I make a motion that we approve Resolution R 20-24. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion with the board on these appointments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these appointments have been made. Next we have is Resolution R 021-24, Resolution of Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Department of Family Children Services. This all reads the same as the one we just read, so I won't bore you with that, but we'll jump down here, it says, whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the member of the Department of Family Children Services DFAC Local County Advisory Board, Deborah Parrish for the remainder of the term and ending on June 30th, 2026. Whereas pursuant to OCGA 493-2, Deborah Parrish is duly qualified to serve as the member of the DFAC's local county advisory board and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, the appointment of Deborah Parrish is appointed. This also comes as a recommendation from the director of the DFACs for Walker County, where they are advising us that Ms. Grabett is having to resign if her letter is accompanying this. And then since Ms. Parrish is a former employee, retired employee of the DFACs, they think she would make a good board member and I agree with that. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution R 21-24 to appoint Deborah Parrish to the DFACs Board. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the appointment has been made. Okay, have a Resolution R 22-24, Resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget to appropriate funds for the settlement of the Walker County Development Authority's Outstanding Economic Development Taxable Refunding Revenue Bond Series 2019. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority, county of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas OCGA 3681-3D requires any increase in appropriations at the legal level of control of the local government were accomplished through a change in extended revenues in any funds or through a transfer of appropriations among departments shall require the approval of the governing authority by ordinance or resolution. And whereas pursuant to the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the Trust Endured and Security Agreement dated as of September 1st, 2015 between Walker County Development Authority and the U.S. Bank National Association Atlanta, Georgia as trustee, as approved by a resolution of the authority adopted on August 31st, 2015, the authority issued its Economic Development Taxable Revenue Bond Series 2015 and the original aggregate principal amount of $15,230,000. For the purpose of providing funds, A, to repay a promissory note obtained by the authority from the county to finance the cost of the acquisition and improving land for the use as two industrial parks owned by the authority known as the Rock Springs Industrial Park and Walker County Industrial Park; B, finance improvements to the industrial park; C, refund the authority taxable revenue bond Ohio Logistics Project Series 2011, which financed a portion of the Rock Springs Industrial Park; D, finance the cost of acquisition from the county, its civic center, agricultural center located at 10052 North Highway 27 in Rock Springs, Georgia; Two, its Mountain Cove Resort properties located on Dottery Gap Road in the unincorporated area of the county. The 2015 projects and eve fund the cost of issuance, the Series 2015 bond. And whereas the Series 2015 bond was secured by lien described in the intergovernmental contract dated September 1, 2015 between the authority and the county and the payments to be made by the county they're under. And whereas on June 11th, 2019, the authority adopted a bond resolution authorizing, among other things, the issuance of the Walker County Development Authority Economic Development Taxable Refunding Revenue Series 2019. The Series 2019 bonds and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14,750,000. Whereas the authority and the county entered into an intergovernmental contract dated August 1, 2019 pursuant to which the authority agreed, among other things, to issue the Series 2019 bonds for the purpose of providing funds to refund the Series 2015 bonds and to continue to return certain facilities consisting of the 2015 projects and certain services related to therefore, or thereto, to the county. And the county agreed to make contract payments in stated amount which is, which are sufficient to pay when due the principles and interests of the 2019 series bonds. Whereas the county authorized the execution and delivery of the bond purchase agreement dated August 7, 2019 among the county and the authority and the Stiefel and Company Incorporated providing for the sale of the 2019 bonds. And whereas the bond maturing on August 1, 2024 and thereafter are redeemable prior to maturity at the option of the authority as described, as directed by the county in whole or in part at any time on or after August 1, 2024. And other orders of maturity from any monies available therefore as part, as par plus accrued interest to the redemption date. And whereas notice of the call of any redemption identifying the bonds or the portions thereof to be rendered and specifically the terms of such redemption shall be given by the paying agent upon being satisfactorily indemnified as to expenses. But mailing a copy of the redemption notice by first-class mail, not more than 60 days, but not less than 30 days prior to the date affixed to the redemption, to the registered owner of each Series 2019 bond to be rendered in whole or in part at the address shown on the books on the bond register. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desire to pay off the indebtedness in full prior to maturity in order to reduce the total amount of interest owed and therefore the total cost of indebtedness. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby authorizes a transfer from the unassigned general fund fund balance, account number 100-9000-61100.05, not to exceed $10,755,000 for the sole purpose of redeeming the 2019 bonds. And be it further resolved that the county, a county department is authorized to transfer these funds to the following general ledger numbers. So the general numbers, general account numbers are listed, bond indebted principal general, bond debt interest general, issuance cost placement agent, issuance cost attorney fees, inter-fund transfer from the general fund, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of June, 2024. So let me unpack some of that, because that's a lot. Back in 2015, the previous administration wanted to build out the industrial park up here in Lefebvre. But the county was heavily in debt and had little cash and was doing tax anticipation notes. So it was a way for them to do a bond issuance to get cash as well as funding to do the improvements to the industrial park that they had entered into an agreement with audio. So with that, at that time, the county was in such a bad financial condition that the bond rating of the county was a junk status rating. And so they had to take and transfer properties from the county government that was free and clear of ownership to the development authority to use those properties as collateral. Typically, when you have government bonds, especially in the state of Georgia, if you're a local government in the state of Georgia, it's very unique to ever have to use properties as collateral. They only do that to the broke communities. So they did that because Walker County was broke and they wanted to make sure there was collateral on the table, so if they had to recall those bonds due to non-payment, that not only was their bond insurance that had to be issued, but there was also collateral that could be called and those properties could be taken. So as it mentioned in this resolution, that included what the county owns at Mountain Cove Farms, that included both industrial parks, and that included the agricultural center and the civic center property in their entirety, were all used as collateral to make that deal work. Plus, having that horrible rating, the county cost of issuance and bond fees and interest rates was extremely high to get that deal done. But they did it anyway. So in 2019, we had made a lot of progress on our finances, we had made a lot of headway on improving and shoring up our balance sheet. We were able to resubmit all of our data to Moody's Rating Agency to get the county a new bond rating or to see if we could get that done. And our goal was, from working with our bond council, was to try to get the county to maybe a double B or triple B rating. We were pleasantly thrilled and surprised when we were able to obtain an A1 credit rating, which got us into the first level of the A ratings with Moody's. So we were very, very happy and ecstatic about that, because what that did, that made us very attractable into the bond market, that we were a local government in Georgia and we had an A1 rating. So what, part of what makes that attracted, attractable to bondholders of government bonds is that, to my knowledge, the state of Georgia and the state of Iowa are the only two states in the country that local county or municipal governments cannot legally file bankruptcy. And the reason they can't is because it goes against your state constitution. So as a county government or any other authority in Georgia, we have an enabling document. So that enabling document allows Walker County to exist as a county. And that was issued in 1833 to Walker County to exist as a county. Cities have, they have, they don't have enabling documents, they have
Charters.
Charters, thank you, they have charters. And so that enabling document allows us to exist, but when you, if and when you become insolvent as a county in Georgia, that allows or enables the state to take back your enabling document and take over your county. And so bonding purchasers of taxable or non-taxable bonds from Georgia government entities, they like those because that's another backstop, they make sure they're going to get paid, because if your county government becomes insolvent, they know the state's going to backstop the deal. And so that's an extra layer of financial protection for these bondholders. So by doing that in 2019, getting that bond rating, getting our balance sheet stronger, we were able to refinance those bonds and we took five years' worth of payments off of those bonds. And $4.9 million worth of interest come off of that bond deal. And the most exciting thing, we got all of our stuff back. We got the Civic Center back, the Ag Center back, our industrial parks back, Mountain Cove Farms back. They were no longer leveraged. When we did the 2019 bond deal, it held on its own merit and weight of the credit rating and the full faith and credit of the county government based off of the bond rating that we then carried. During that time, we were advised to put a five-year call on that bond to allow this governing body, five years, which is where we are today, to look at this and say, do we want to pay these bonds off? So it has been my goal since 2017 to get this county 100% out of debt. This is the largest single debt that the county still holds. This will be paying these bonds off 10 years early and will save us a little over $1.9 million additional dollars of interest and will free up about $1.2 million a year in cash flow for this county. And so this is a, is a, is a great opportunity and a great win for Walker County. So this first resolution authorizes to amend the budget. The next resolution that's been prepared by the bond attorney is all the legalese and all the structure that the county will go through to take, to get these bonds paid and get these bonds off of the balance sheet of the county government. And this is something that I've had conversations with them for several months. And we've got these documents, you can see they were dated the June 7th. Our county attorney has worked with the bond council, has worked with the Stiefel Group, finds everything in order, and we have to have all of this information submitted to hit all these timelines tomorrow. So this is down, literally down to the wire. So is there any questions, comments, concern from the board?
Well done. I'm very pleased with this.
Good, very good. Anything else?
I'm ready to write the check.
Okay, very good. So do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 22-24 to amend the budget for Walker County of $10,755,000 to be transferred out of the unassigned general fund balance of Walker County Government?
Yes, motion to
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion with the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, this next resolution, I don't intend to, to read all this, this is quite long because there's an attachment, there's a lot of legalese here. Again, this was prepared by the bond council, reviewed by our council. I don't know if there's anything our attorney wants to add to this. I know he's, he's taken, taken a deep dive into this, but this resolution is a resolution to approve the Walker County Development Authority's Outstanding Economic Taxable Refunding Revenue Bond Series 2019. And these be the, once these documents are made final and all the information is completed, would be sent to the bond carrier. So we have a motion to approve Resolution R 23-24.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved. Next item we have is a purchase order 2024-1985. We have started our work on our elections building, which is the former Family Dollar Building. We have two quotes here before you to replace, to have the existing roof removed and have the gutters and downspouts removed and have a new TPO roof replaced and new gutters and downspouts. The proposal from JBM Repairs LLC, we have done several smaller projects with them. We have found them to be a very good vendor and be on time and have all, they always stick to their proposal, they've never had any overcharges. That proposal is $58,950 and you see the scope of work. Five-year warranty on the craftsmanship, 20-year warranty by the manufacturer. This does include a new two-inch ISO deckboard, also includes all the flashing around the HVAC. Again, we're upgrading to eight-inch gutters with six-inch downspouts. This includes all of the coping caps, everything for complete job, even new blocks under the gas lines. The other quote we had was at $82,591. So this quote, $58,950 is our recommendation and this is something that and this is something that they have the ability to get on fairly quickly. So we have a motion to approve purchase order 2024-1985 in the amount of $58,950.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Okay, we have our monthly department statistics here. Go over some of these numbers of highlights of some, some things. We've had some strong months on our roadside pickup of 13,640 pounds of trash picked up off the side of the road, that was a great month. Very pleased we've had 10 additional smoke alarms installed in our county, 52 for the year. We continue to sign people up on our Cyrene GPS notification, so that's a free download app, so 76 new members to that, 811 members for the year, 21 new single-family home construction building permits, and our transit department's been very consistent, they had 2,400 riders last month, and then in April, and then May they had 2,376. So transit is running very, very efficiently and very, very busy. Also, our best friends data shows our breakout of our animal intake and outgoing as well, and there's a lot of other information there that each of y'all can look at on that report. So at this time, we'll move to our Commissioner comments, and we'll start with District One, Commissioner Blakemore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and being involved. Appreciate all of our employees, especially the ones working outside, it's getting really hot. Appreciate all y'all out there outside and make sure you stay hydrated.
Commissioner Askew, sir.
Oh, well, I do want to, I do want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman, on this debt reduction. I, I want to congratulate as well the other board members for continuing to stay that course for the last three years, to continue to try to get it where we are today, so to get this check written and get out from under debt there. Also, I want to mention the Highway 27 farmers market. I didn't get a chance to go because I was in the hay field, but they did open up and I
Last week and the
Yes, and this, right, and so I wanted to mention that, please get out in the tent and, and help it become a, help, help them keep that thing open up there, we need it up that way too as well, so. And anything I can do, just reach out to me, I'd be glad to hear complaints, kudos, anything you got for us, so just, just continue to come and be a part of the process. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, thanks. So I am glad to see the work starting on the Family Dollar, that's something that Jim Buckner and I had a conversation about probably three years ago, and it's, we got a really good deal on that building, and glad to see Todd and him's crew working on that, and excited about that. And also like to, would, would, to, as a taxpayer more than an elected official, thank the chairman for, for the, for the debt. I, I first met Shannon in 2016, and he told me what the debt was, he said, we're going to pay that debt off, and I thought, well, you're crazy. Because you let people all the time to Congress and Senate, and they're going to go to Washington, and they're going to, they're going to decrease the national debt, what does it do? It just goes up. But under the chairman's guidance for the last seven years, and Mark said the chairman by himself, the first four, then us these three, you know, working with him, to the county employees, to the county taxpayers, everybody had a part with that, but it's, there's not many counties in the state that are, that are out of debt and in as good a shape as we're in, and it's just thankful for the chairman for his leadership on that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to mention several things. I know, talked a little bit about the farmers markets, and, you know, the farmers market at the Highway 27 Ag Center is on Wednesday mornings from, from nine to noon. They also, there's another organization that's done a great job of having a farmers market here in the city of Lafette, and they do that on Saturday mornings in block off part of the street. Also, there's a farmers market at Stable 41 in the city of Fort Oathorpe, and that's on, I believe, Thursday evenings as well as Saturdays as, as well. There's also a farmers market in, in Ringo that they have. And so it's wonderful to be in a community where we have this many thriving farmers markets, and we're all working and collaborating together. We had a meeting just earlier this week with, with City of Fort Oathorpe, collaborating with them on their farmers market, and them likewise, and learning from each other, sharing information. And so we want to see all of our farmers markets be successful, you know, and they do have produce items along with other homemade, locally made items. I went and bought some jam the other day, so, you know, just a lot of different things. Some homemade craft type items are well are being displayed and sold. So visit all of these farmers markets, they're all unique and different and have different items each week, have different vendors each week, and so it's great to have these in our community. Also, we're very, very close on opening our all-inclusive playground at the Civic Center Pavilion. The exact date of the ribbon cutting grand opening will be forthcoming, we'd like just a few items to have everything ready. One of those items is some, some hand railing for the sidewalk ramp, supposed to be installed by the end of next week. The road to Public Works Department puts down some sod yesterday and did a great job on it, so we're really, really close, and we're going to announce that in a few days of what that date is, and, and hope everyone will come out in that celebration of getting the, the playground open. Also, it was mentioned that at our budget meeting back on the first Monday in June, that there was, the civic center and the transit departments were, were missing. That was the first budget hearing under this board of that style that the board wanted to try. There was many other departments that were not represented. We did a 15, 20-minute scheduled block, just trying to find our way and figure how much time we needed, so there's about a dozen or better other departments that were not represented at that budget meeting that's, that is part of our budget. And so we tried to focus on the larger departments that have the largest budgets, and also the departments we knew that would have the greatest need of, of request. So as another example, our, our records storage department wasn't there. Well, it's pretty much records is pretty, pretty neutral, and they don't have a lot of changes and things like that. So that's just another example of a, of a department. Same thing with the civic center, it's a pretty, pretty mellow type operation versus our other elected officials and things. And there was also other elected departments that were not represented there as well. So it wasn't that we were trying to hide anything or skate anything, it's just that we booked out a whole day to come and have that budget hearing, and we tried to prioritize those the best we could. Also, I would like to thank the board for their continued support with the finances of the county and working toward the common goal of getting our county 100% debt-free. And appreciate the, the taxpayers that's carried that burden and that load, but we will, you know, work towards getting this county 100% out of debt this year, and we will be one of the only counties in the country, and one of a handful in the state of Georgia that has, has no debt. And so the future of this county is, is unlimited of what it can do going forward, not carrying any debt, and will be in a very, very strong position through that. So at this time, do we have any reason for an executive session?
Yes. Re-listened.
And personnel.
Okay, so do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel?
Motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will stand adjourned, and we'll come back after executive session. Okay, I'm going to call us back to order, it's June 13, 2024, and it is 8:01 PM, we just exited our executive session. There's no further business of this board at this time from executive session, so do we have a motion to adjourn and close out our meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.